Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it.
Is everybody in? Oh, so with that?
Yeah.
Really? Okay. I didn't know because I did this before, my whole name, but they changed it or something. Okay. We're going to resume back into our work session. We are now at presentations. First presentation up is a grant update. Trey Van Leech, Director of Federal and State Programs.
And with him also will be Tasha Johnson.
Okay.
Should we talk about the grant side, should we talk the program?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Why is getting set up? Tasha, can you start talking about the program, what we have the 21st century grant? Why is getting set up?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tasha Johnson and I'm the Assistant PDAD. Our 21st century before and after school grant program caters to kindergarten through fifth grade. Currently, we have one hundred and eighty-two students that are enrolled and they'll be in buildings, ELC, Westbrook, and Madison Park. Right now, our staff is going through training to make sure that we have the proper licenses and everything to be compliant with the grant. Our hours of operation, we have before school, early drop-off at six forty-five AM, and that is a really great time to start out, simply because we have parents that need to get to work, and so we want to make sure that the kids are safe and in an environment where they can also succeed academically. In that morning portion that goes from six forty-five to eight forty-five, we're going to have activities such as arts and crafts, there'll be physical activities, there'll also be a time for homework assistance. So if you think about those kids, or if you were one of those students that was in class that really understood everything that, while you were in school, then you go home and it's all of a sudden, you draw this blank, we want to be able to provide assistance before school for those students so that they don't feel a certain way going into the classroom, not having an opportunity to have their homework done. So we want to provide supports that way. We also will be setting up a digital literacy program that will allow for some coding, keyboarding, spreadsheets, all types of things that'll be appropriate for the grade levels to assist to make sure that they are where they need to be to be successful in the 21st century. So that'll be six forty-five to eight forty-five, and at eight forty-five, they will see breakfast. They'll go on to their regular class day, and then once it's over, starting at three o'clock, and I know that varies from different schools, some schools get out at three, another gets out at three-ten, and another one at three-twenty, so there'll be a ten-minute interval in between for each one of those. We'll start out our day, or our afternoon, with a snack to kind of get their minds going and all of that, to make sure that they're, have a healthy snack. Then they'll lead on to homework assistance, and then also enrichment. So if there are students that need that homework, that one-on-one, the use of manipulatives to assist them, we'll provide that opportunity for them. And then there'll also be, again, enrichment, so that could be Boys Club or Boy Scouts coming in, it could be that they participate in Girls on the Run in their building, so different activities. The library will be supporting, Darren Bell, so there's all types of partnerships that we're working with in the community to make sure that our kids are well-rounded socially, emotionally, academically as well. And then after that, we're going to go into the portion that's academic. So it'll start out, we'll start out with reading, and we have an online program, Achieve Three Thousand, that is a computer program that targets the kids where their levels are, and then they prescribe a program that will put them where they need to be to make sure that they're showing growth and closing the gaps. After that, they'll go into math, and that'll be with Compass Learning, and that also is an online program that allows you to kind of prescribe where the kids are, and then they're able to grow and have some, what did I say? Opportunities to grow and to excel based off of their needs, as opposed to just kind of sticking them in something that may not work for them. Finishing out that afternoon at five o'clock, they will have dinner. So we want to make sure that the students leave with dinner, because after that, we have events with parent engagement, there are board meetings and all of that, that we want our parents to be able to participate in, and we feel like if they're provided a meal, they know that they can attend something else and their child has been taken care of throughout the day. So overall, again, we want to make sure that we are providing the homework assistance, we want to provide a healthy environment for them, whether it be nutrition, whether it is, again, academic, social, emotional, all of those pieces kind of wrapped in one. I know a question that was brought up to me ahead of time was about latchkey. So the ELC has latchkey already, the students that participate in latchkey will also have the opportunity to participate in any of the features that we have in 21st century, so we don't want them to fill out, the times will kind of run concurrently. So even if they weren't able to stay for the afternoon program, which will be opening up to everyone, but they'll still be able to participate in a few things. What else came up? Oh, the thing that we want to add is on Fridays and Saturdays, because the after-school program runs Monday through Thursday, on Friday and Saturdays, we want to extend our enrichment, so we want to include field trips, swimming, fishing, all types of activities that we want to expose our kids to that they typically don't have, which will also be a great thing to support our athletics. We have great programs in football, and in tennis, and in basketball, but we want those non-profitable sports, we want to show kids that that's not the only thing that you can do. If you have crafting that you do well in, we might want to provide things like sewing and t-shirt making, things like that, of that nature. If you're an artist, we want to get people to come in and provide art. So we want our kids to be well-rounded and don't feel like, just because I'm not good at this, I can't excel at something else. So we'll provide those opportunities on Fridays and Saturdays. Are there any questions?
So what you're saying is we're actually going to give kids breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
Yes.
And snack?
Yes, all free and all healthy. And they will have a hot meal for dinner, so they'll get something that's hot, it's not just...
I just can't, I mean, that is going to be so helpful for families.
Yes, and our start date is Monday, so it'll be Monday, October the eighth. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, shall we now share information around title and the grants?
Okay, I attempted to make it short as I could, so there's a lot of information about the title of our programs that we do have, so I'm going to attempt, there's four or five, I've made some short statements on them, so maybe you have an idea of what they actually represent. So the first one being Title One, and again, it reads that Title One funds are to ensure that all our children have a fair and equal and significant opportunity to obtain a high-quality education. That's Title One. Title Two is more of a supportive, affectionate, it's called, it's a supporting effective instruction which could be used to improve the skills and knowledge of the principals or leaders in the building. So again, this is one of the funds that is actually used for. Title Four, again, this is a student support academic enrichment, which is, again, concentrating on like college and career, music and arts, science, and technology. Early childhood, which is ECE, if you hear that, those letters, that's what it means, early college, early children education. Again, this is the purpose of preparing our young students, again, with disabilities, to meet their individual academic needs. We also have 21st Century, and 21st Century funds are purposes to support our out-of-school learning opportunities, again, which is what Ms. Johnson was talking about as it relates to the activities as well as for students. As you look on the screen there, it talks about some of the areas in which we support, again, talking about certified staff, teachers, and tutors, as well as online teaching is what we'll have at our before and after-school programs, our resources that we have, our professional development events that we have, again, administrative trainings and support, and then professional conferences as well. But we also have coaching, collaboration, and opportunities for all teachers as well. We also have a parent involvement or parent engagement, which Ms. Ella Johnson will be talking about, but I just want to kind of quickly go over that a little bit. Ella, Jordan Isaac, I keep destroying her name occasionally. I call her Isaac Jordan, Jordan Isaac, but she's lovely nevertheless. Ella Jordan Isaac. But again, in that one, Title One, you have to allow at least one percent of that title budget that we receive in order to make sure that we have parents involved. And of course, here's the schools which receive Title Ones, which is all the schools. Right now, we have approximately twenty-six hundred students here that are enrolled in our school year, and of course, our federal funds right now are utilizing fourteen licensed teachers and tutors, with nine support services we're using, such as social workers, mental health specialists, as well as student encouragers. We also have family community, which is Ms. Jordan Isaac. We have one administrator, and then we have professional development as well. So again, some of the programs that we have are focusing on, concentrating on caring for our community learners, to make sure that they understand what we're doing here and how they can help support us as well. Now this screen is, this is, it seems to be an important one for some people, so I've attempted to kind of break it down in little sections so you kind of understand how we use these funds. I'll let you know also, on the website, I'll be, make sure that this information is available to you in more of a detail also online. We should have that up and running by November. All right, Title One instruction is, we're using seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, or you can read those numbers, eight oh one ninety-five for just instruction. We have support services we also use. We have governing administration, professional development, family and community, as well as supplies. We also have to fund our non-public schools, we're obligated to give them services as well, because those are most of our students that come out of Trotwood. Also Title Two, again, it gives you amount for Title Two, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, Title Four, as well as Idea B, which is our special end. Again, those are the numbers in which we use and how we use those monies. Please keep in mind, we can't adjust those throughout the year depending on what our needs are. Again, there could be revisions, monthly, quarterly, or whatnot, but we try to do as minimum as we can, we try to plan and use that money for what we state, but then things do occur that may need more attention, depending on whether we need more personnel or more support. And these are members of part of the state and federal programs, again, you can read those names, me, Ella Isaacs, Isaac, Tasha, Chiara, and Tia, she is our intern from Wilberforce University. And she does a great job with us right now, she's working with Ms. Johnson right now as well. So if you have any questions, again, this is short, there's a lot more information as it pertains to this. Questions? Don't have any, I'll be available for more questions.
Okay, let's go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Taxes, Amounts, and Rates, presented by Janice Allen, our treasurer.
Okay. Travan, 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 I made some copies. Which one, this one?
Yep.
Okay, the reason why I wanted to do this presentation is obviously we have three new board members into today, Montgomery County wants every district to have the boards approve their amounts and rates for taxes purposes. And so what I wanted to do is to go through the millages, what type of taxes we have and assess valuation. So it's really kind of more like a training session for my board and the audience members. So the information that I wanted to provide for you today is the type of tax mileage. I'll be talking about cap levies, property tax calculations, and the assessed valuation, and then the amounts and rates projected and actual. Okay, so there's several types of mileage that we have. The first type is inside mileage, and that's when the entity does not have to vote, they don't go out to the voters for that, we actually have six point two mils that are non-voted mileage. The second type of tax mileage is outside voted mileage, and our district has fifty-five point eight-six mils. And then effective mileage, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, and that's the credit factor that is applied to the voted mils, so I'll be talking about that. Right now, for FY eighteen, right now for residential and agricultural, fifty-two point four-three mils, and these are effective mils, and fifty-nine point seven commercial and industrial. So what actually is inside mileage? Again, each taxing district is permitted to levy a total of, a total of ten mils totally, and so the inside mileage in our area, we have six point two mils, the city has one point six mils, and the county has one point six mils for a total of nine point five mils. And it was really interesting when I researched this, I didn't realize this, but really, we have a, just a small point five mils, I'm not sure if that's just extra, and that probably will, will stay like that, the total for our county would be nine point five, the total for our area just would be nine point five. But right now, it's voted, or not voted, but we have six point two mils for our area for, that we don't take to the voters. And then I said tax revenue rises or falls in direct proportion to changes in property values, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as well. Outside mileage, so obviously, we went to our voters, our residents of Trotwood, for our particular voted levies, and those voted levies are subject to a reduction factor, and that's due to House Bill nine twenty, and I'll talk about that in a second. Then, as I said before, reduction factors are used to adjust your tax rates either up or down, and that's what's called effective mileage. And then the last thing was, the rates cannot be adjusted above what the mileage rate when the voters voted on a particular mileage, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in my other slides. So again, effective mileage, due to House Bill nine twenty, when the property values were going out the roof, basically, they adopted this, and I can't remember what year they adopted this House Bill twenty, and what it says is assessment or update of property values takes place in the value of the real property has increased due to inflation, a tax credit is then applied to the voted mils. And then this prevents an increase in the tax bill for a property owner because the inflation has increased the value of the property. So if the value of the property just keeps going up and up and up, then your taxes would be out of the roof. So this House Bill nine twenty was voted in to keep those mileage in basically in check. So this is Montgomery County School District tax rates for our particular school district, and you can see we have inside mileage, again, as I talked about, six point two. We have current expense levies, we have four of those, and the total tax rate is forty-two point seven-four, but if you look on the right-hand side, they indicate that your, for your effective rate, the thirty-three point one-two and the forty, forty point three-nine. We have a bond levy, that thirty-five million dollar bond levy was used to, to construct all of our schools, and we're still paying for that, obviously. We have a classroom facilities levy, that's a half-mil levy that we use to, for operational improvements in the school, and then we have permanent improvement, and there's two pieces to a permanent improvement levy, and that's one for technology, and the other one was for our locally, it's called locally funded initiatives, and that paid for our auditorium, auditorium, and other things that the state of Ohio would not pay for as we constructed our schools. Okay, so this is a list of our taxes. Again, as I talked about, we have general fund, well, these first five are in the general fund, six point two, and by statute, it's inside mileage, so it's not, it's without the vote of the people. Then we have four current expense levies, and you can see the mileage rate, the date of the vote, and they're all continuous. So we don't have any replacement levies, we don't have any substitute levies, they are continuous, and that means we don't have to go back to the voter every year to get those approved. We have permanent improvement, as I talked about, the one point six-one is for the locally funded initiatives that we had when we first constructed our schools, and then the permanent improvement, we use that money for all the technology pieces, and we have used that money this year for all the one, not all of it, but some of the costs for the one-to-one computer initiatives that we have implemented. Our classroom facilities, again, a half-mil, half-mil that we have, and that's used for operational, operational items. One thing that we're going to look at is we have to replace a chiller, and that, that particular expenditure, we will use that money for, to pay for that. And then again, our bond, thirty-five million dollar bond that we went out, and at this point, it's ten point one-one, and every year, the auditor, I'm sorry, the county auditor calls me in December and asks me whether that ten point one-one mils can sustain, can we pay our bond retirement from the ten point one-one? And, and the last couple times, we've had to increase that, but last year, we did not have to increase that, but that can be increased if we find out that we're not collecting enough money in that bond retirement fund. So the total, again, is sixty-two point oh-six mils. Cap levies, and I just wanted to kind of try to explain cap levies. Again, there's, we have five levies, I'm going to go back, and the ones that I've starred, the eight point one-five, the seven point one-eight, both permanent improvement levies and the classroom facilities levies are deemed as, are deemed as capped. And so these particular levies, we cannot exceed the original tax revenue. So when the citizens voted for those taxes, it brought in a certain amount of money, that's all of the money that it can bring in. And so as your property taxes increase and your effective mils decrease, and I'll show you the slide after this, it can only go to a certain cap. Over the last five, I think, five years, we've lost one point one million dollars in revenue due to these cap levies. And then the only way to recoup these losses is to receive voter approval or a brand levy. So this is my attempt to kind of explain the concept of cap levies. And so I use the eight point one-five mil levy as an example, there is a cap there, whatever the voters voted back in the two thousands for that, if the property, it'll do to the right, if the property values go up, the effective mileage goes down, and therefore, that money that they voted on stays the same. On the other side, if the property values are, continue to go down, and the effective mils have to be raised, they can't go over the eight point five. And so if they do, that's the differential that we're losing in terms of money. So I'm in tax year, and I just, in tax year seventeen eighteen, the tax rate now is eight point, eight point one-five, the effective rate is eight point one-oh, the non-effective capital, I'm sorry, non-residential effective rate is eight point one-five, and we have total assessed valuation for Trotwood of two hundred and eleven million dollars. Okay, so I thought this would be helpful, how property taxes are calculated. So the Board of Tax Appeals adopted a rule, I'm not sure exactly when, but required that the assessed valuation be thirty-five percent of your sale value. So for instance, if you had a home house value of a hundred thousand dollars, the assessed valuation is thirty-five thousand dollars. So the, all of the properties in the city of Trotwood, the total is two hundred and eleven million dollars. And so I did a calculation, and the tax generated with a twelve point five percent rollback would be about sixteen hundred dollars. And you can see as your house value is lower, obviously, you pay lower tax, taxes. I think it's going to sleep. Okay. So this is the assessed taxable values that I talked about. For, and I did in like a five-year span, just to give you some idea of what's going on. So back in FY thirteen, I did FY sixteen, and I did current. So, so the residential piece was a hundred and sixty-four million dollars, is now reduced to one forty-seven. However, the sweet part of it is the last couple years, it started to plateau out, out, plateau, and so therefore, the valuations aren't going down as rapidly as they are, I think Ms. Moore talked about, for instance, that we're on the rise. I mean, I think all of us know that Trotwood, Trotwood, the city of Trotwood is back on the rise in terms of our, our residential and commercial values. Again, commercial and industrial, you can see that it does, it did take a dip from sixteen to eighteen, but it is still plateauing again, public utility, and then a total, you can see, we started with in FY thirteen with two hundred and thirty-two million, and we plateaued out the last two years at two hundred and eleven million dollars. So the amounts and rates that I'm asking you tonight to look at as informational is the Montgomery County sends us these projections, and so I did inside mileage, outside mileage, and then the tax rate, and then the tax rate for outside mileage. And so you can see in nineteen, in their tax year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and this is what we're going to be looking at this time, your inside mileage is one point two million, outside is nine point eight, six point two again is the inside mileage, and then we're at fifty-five point eight-six outside mils. And then the actual tax receipts, I wanted you to look at that from FY sixteen to FY eighteen for general fund, you can see to the right, and this just through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, eight point seven million dollars for general fund, two point two million dollars for the bond, permanent improvement, one million dollars, and classroom facilities is three thirty-one. I looked at why some of the fluctuations, a lot of the fluctuations have a lot to do with delinquent receipts, and so one year, you might, it might be better than the next year, so a lot of times, the delinquent receipts do account for the variance. And that's all. And so when you look, when we look at approving those tax and rates, hopefully, that will give you a better idea of what the inside and outside mileage are. Do you have any questions? I know it's a lot, a lot of information, and, you know, we haven't time. I know it's a lot, a lot of information, and, and you know, we have time to look at it if you have any questions.
Ms. Allen, on the bond millage, it's ten point eleven?
Yes.
And you said that if it's not enough, then you have the ability to increase it? What is the maximum amount you can increase the bond?
And I don't know exactly the maximum amount, but we have to pay back our retirement, the money that we borrowed. And so there, there could, I don't know, I can't say a maximum, but what we're trying to do is make sure that we can stay at ten point one-one mills and not increase it any further. Because I think, since I've been here in the last two years, we've increased it, I think, by one mill. And I think we gave a presentation a couple of years ago on why we increased that.
How do we manage it so that it stays at ten point one-one? We, we do some different things within our?
Yeah, and it depends on our debt schedule. So the debt schedule, sometimes the principal payment is a little higher than the next year. And so sometimes the, the collections also dictate how much money we have in our bond retirement fund as well. And so that we can get the delinquent collections up, and also get the current collections current, then we can sustain our bond retirement account. So, if there is a concern that we're not getting the revenue in, I would definitely bring it to the board, and we can kind of discuss ways that we can look at that. Because the general fund could support, if we, if we wanted to, to supplement some of that bond retirement if we, if we decided that as a board. But that's, that would be a last resort.
I got a quick question.
Looking at that.
Just for explanation, say, one mill is worth how much money?
Two, one tenth, so two hundred and eleven, I'm sorry, one one thousand, two hundred and eleven million. One mill equals two hundred and eleven thousand.
So roughly, so roughly, one dollar per every thousand dollars on the value of the homes?
Yes.
So?
And I'm a bet, remember, your taxable assessed valuation is thirty-five percent.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
So, and that, that was just for clarity. So the county, and I'm assuming that this is, in essence, really a formality of them wanting us to approve the millage rate.
Right, because they, they bake that into their budget, so yes, yes, it is, yes.
So, I would want to know, from Mr. Keith at the auditor's office, why, before I would say, yeah, I feel comfortable approving this, why a mill in Trotwood is worth less than a mill in Inglewood? Or why a mill is worth less versus Trotwood, versus Clayton, versus Centerville?
But I, I can answer that, Mr. Stairs. There, the residential values are a lot higher. So if you take the residential values here, and I just, just research, average is about, I would say, about fifty thousand dollars. And Centerville, it might be a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. And so their assessed valuation is way, way, way higher than the city of Trotwood. And that's the difference, that's, that's the reason why our millage is a lot less than the Centerville or Kettering or some, some other areas that have higher, also higher residential, as well as higher commercial values.
So, then it would be the responsibility of the auditor to reassess the value of the homes in Trotwood?
And they do that. Every three years is a triennial update, and every six years is a regular update. So they do go out, the triennial, triennial update actually is a more comprehensive valuation. And the other updates are just looking at the house from a, a, the lens, and just giving you just an overview. So there, there are reevaluations every three years.
But we are asked to approve it every year?
Yes.
You see what I'm saying?
But they, they have to file a budget, and so that's why they have to file a tax budget, and that's why they ask us to approve it every year. I would, I, Mr. Keith would be more than happy to come and answer or give a presentation, and I could set that up in the future if you would like.
I would like that.
Okay, I can do that. Because he's been here before. So we, we could invite, whenever, at your pleasure, we could invite him to give a presentation on that as well.
Because if, if it's a known fact, which I believe at this point it is, that not just residential property, but also commercial property value is on the increase in Trotwood, then, I mean, I would like to know that we receive more money per mill with that in mind.
Right.
If they're asking us to approve it, I mean, we don't have to.
And they're, and what they're asking us, Mr. Stairs, to approve is just projections, just like we do projections or estimates for five-year. It's really a projection, and that's why I'd like to show you what our actual receipts are, because they are a little higher than what they projected, and that's why I wanted to share that with you. All right, so I will put that on the to-do list, and I'll work with the President. To look at the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is AmeriCorps, and that is Mr. Olverston.
Yes, I'm superintendent. Yeah, my ex-colleagues, Kiara Williams, please. And we're going to actually distribute the information about AmeriCorps to you, and you should start talking about the program and what you learned.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So our elementary schools, ELC and Madison Park, have just recently completed their fall benchmarking and reading, where we assess the students' reading skills, and we assign or designate students to be on track or off track of reading. And then from there, the students are provided a reading improvement and monitoring plan depending on their needs. And currently, right now, as you can see, that our numbers are showing that kindergarten, in kindergarten, seventy-five percent of our students are in need of intensive support, meaning that they will need a reading improvement and monitoring plan. First grade, seventy-four percent, second grade, sixty-three percent, and third grade, fifty-three percent. And then I go further along to say, for each class, what's the average number of REMPs? Each teacher, the average number of reading improvement plans per grade level. And so you can see kindergarten, the average number is seven. Even those, we have some that are fluctuating, some are a little higher, some are a little lower. This is average, first grade, nine REMPs, second grade, five REMPs, and third grade, seven REMPs. And so for each reading and mon, reading improvement and monitoring plan, a student's intense, when a student is deemed as needing intensive support, there could be a range of skills that are contributing to that deficit or to that designation. And the teachers are going to need some additional support in order to make sure that all of those students who are in need of intensive support, plus the ones who are not in need of as much support are not getting neglected. So that's why the curriculum department is coming to the board to propose that we partner with AmeriCorps, which I believe we've done in the past with Madison Park, to help support and help to support the classrooms in making sure that all students, no matter whether they're on a reading improvement plan or not, get the support that they need. So, for, for example, if we have AmeriCorps member that comes and supports so many students, it could be that the teacher themselves, who know exactly what the skills are needed for the students, that the teacher could be working on the most intensive needs for a set of group of kids. And then the AmeriCorps members might be working on more, not as intensive needs for other groups of students. But we just want to make sure that all students, no matter whether they're intensive or not as intensive, that they have someone who's working on their needs, and AmeriCorps can help us with that.
One of the questions that came up just in the review of the program is, the AmeriCorps volunteer? Or worker, I should say, will they be actually inside the classroom with the teacher, or will they be pulling students out of the classroom?
Well, all the schools are pretty packed in the room. So most likely, some of them will be right in the classroom, like a pool to the side, at the kidney tables in the back. They might be able to find some space, but each situation might look a little different, but most of them will be pushing.
I'm happy to hear that, that they are going to be, I guess.
How do we define intensive versus targeted support?
Sure. So when you think of RTI, you have your first level, which is core, that's core instruction, that's what all students are to receive. And the next level is your targeted or your tier-two. And then your, your, your top tier are your intensive, most intensive needs. And so targeted is, I mean, it means just that, it's targeted, but it's not as intensive as the higher needs. So obviously, students that need intensive support, support they're getting is still very targeted, just to use this language. And so when this, when the teachers write the reading improvement and monitoring plans, they write in the plans very specifically what skills the student needs. For example, in kindergarten, students might be struggling with letter naming or the first sounds of the words. So, and the kindergarten might need both of those skills. And each of those skills require their own explicit lessons that could take anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes.
And that's what the AmeriCorps worker would have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation is mental health services, Mr. Aaron Gregory, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Access.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to give you all an update on what we're doing in Trotwood in terms of how we're supporting our students around our mental health services. First, I wanted to kind of give an overall picture of some of the things that are going on nationally around mental health. What I was finding is, according to Mental Health America, youth mental health, health crisis is actually rising. It's worsening across the country. Between a three-year span, we went up approximately four point five percent. If you look at that, that would fill, fill all the East Coast baseball stadiums as we're preparing for the World, for the World Series. It'll fill them up twice of the number of students that actually have these crises. And we also know that severe depression is also worsening. Seventy-six percent of those with severe depression are not actually being served because the insurance, even private insurance, are not covering that. Another statistic that we might also want to be aware of is that there's also a decrease in the amount of service providers that are providing services for mental health. Nationally, we're looking at an eight percent decrease, which amounts to six times the individuals who actually, we have more, six times the patients of those who need services for every one provider. With looking at that across what they have, what the impact that has across our school district is that currently, we have two mental health providers that are serviced, we have one that's servicing all of our elementaries, and we also have one that's servicing our middle and high school. If you want to look at numbers, then we can also say that we have about twenty students who are being served at our high school. Of those twenty students, we have about fourteen that are students with disabilities. In the middle school alone, we have sixteen students, of those are about eight with students with disabilities. Many of those students with disabilities also have a service amount of time actually written, written to their IEPs. What I also have finding is doing, you know, doing a review of that, is finding that there was one student that had upwards of two hundred and forty minutes a month written into their IEP for, for services for mental health. Another student had over a hundred and thirty-five minutes a month written into their IEPs for mental health services. Of those other students, majority of them had no less than sixty minutes per week written to their IEPs for mental health services. So as you can see, our mental health providers are extremely busy in our schools. As well, that also has to do with our social workers. We have a lot of issues with social workers that have done things in terms of providing glasses for students who can't, who can't see or have vision screening problems. Also, providing rides to parents who need to enroll their students in school here because transportation is an issue. They're doing a lot of these kind, this kind of work, as well as filling in for our mental health providers who have, also have to service students on IEPs. Or when there's a crisis, there's been a lot of spikes with suicide prevention in our schools and crisis that our, our mental providers have to respond to, and that may take all day. So when they're doing that, that's taking away from their other students that they have to serve, which leaves a gap that they have to wind up doing compensatory for or finding the time to, to catch up. So what we've done here is we've actually developed a protocol or a flowchart here of what we need to do in terms of providing services. So in our buildings, all counselors, referrals go directly to them. From counselors, then the referrals will go to either our social worker, depending on what the need might be, or our mental health therapist, who will then, you know, decide what is the plan or course of treatment. As Kiara was talking about, with our tier-two and tier-three, that also moves us into another stage when we're looking at our IAT, which is our Intervention Assistant Team. So our mental health providers therapists may also be part of that IAT team to determine what those needs are. From there, we also develop an ISP or action plan, and that leads to, you know, some of the groups that I wanted to talk to you about. Some of the things we know that we must do for our young ladies socially is because there's a lot of body shaming. There's a lot of shaming that goes on in middle school and high school. So some of our therapists want to provide things such as girls on the run, to provide those supports to them, to want to do things such as a lunch bunch, a lunch bunch, which is also providing support services maybe to students who are having a hard time socially fitting in or adjusting to middle school and high school, letting them know that it's okay and we all get through those hard times together. So those are some of the things that they've come to me with, that they want to, they want to actually add and incorporate. Also, some after-school services they want to provide to students that they're, they're looking into. I also want to move to our after-school services and to let you know that we are having Red Zone come aboard probably within the next week or two. Right now, we currently have over seventy students who are going to be serviced by Red Zone for after-school care. So, you know, with that, again, a lot of those students who are up at seventy are not the ones who are actually being served during the school day. Are there any questions?
You're using a lot of acronyms, and I don't know what any of those are. So what's an ISP?
So ISP is an, is individual service plan. So those students, they actually, they create a, a plan for them, right? So the idea is not for them to be on and have to provide services forever, but how can they wean, wean and take away some of those services, those, those supports? So they actually create a plan that are shared with the community, shared with the families, shared with, as part of the IEP team possibly, with them in terms of what is that plan for that child? If there is, you know, an actual crisis, what is a crisis plan for that child? Who can that child go to for help? Who, you know, what are their first protocols? Who do we need to reach out to for that child? So that's what ISP is.
And you said Red Zone, that's mental health services as a company or?
Correct. Red Zone actually has took the place of Eastway prior to, you know, prior to this year. Eastway was one of those mental health providers that provided services for our school district and school system.
So that's a third-party organization?
It is.
Okay, I thought, I thought we were going to be providing our own mental health services.
We did. So we have two mental health therapists that are actually right here that are Trotwood employees, all right? And a lot of them are doing some of those, providing some of those services during the day. However, with such a need and high demand, we also have an outside third-party, which is Red Zone, at no cost to the district, of providing those after-school services to students who are in need.
Is that funded under a grant or?
Medicated.
What is that funded?
A lot of, a lot of students have medicated. And it could be, could be funded under that, you know, yes.
We have three more mental health specialists that we already, a lot of four, and we'll bring those on. So each building, they will have a mental health therapist in their building during the school day.
Okay. In addition to what we have?
In addition to what we already have. So then you have an Eastway will then support us even more for those students who need additional support outside during the school day.
Okay.
Eastway?
Not Eastway, I'm sorry, Red Zone.
I thought we didn't.
Red Zone, I'm sorry.
Correction, all right? All right? Dr. Gregory, can we get a copy of the information?
Sure, by chart?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
All right. Okay, next up, culinary arts, business and culinary arts.
Yes.
CTE, and that's Lisa Minor, curriculum director?
Yes, and she has Ray, Principal Ray Brothers, High School Principal, coming with her.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good evening, everyone, and let me get the microphone. Thank you for the opportunity to share about career tech education. We do have an approved application from the Ohio Department of Ed to offer culinary arts and business career tech programming. And I'm excited this evening to... And I'm excited this evening to present Mr. Ray Carruthers, who's going to give more details about what we'll be able to offer and some future plans for career tech education in Trotwood at the high school. He comes to us with extensive experience in career tech education. He actually is the president of the Ohio Career Tech Association for the state of Ohio. So he leads that organization. Under his leadership, when he was principal opponents, they were featured in a 2014 U.S. News and World Report article for one of the best career tech programs in the nation. So he's, you know, has a lot of recognition nationally as well. And he's got a PowerPoint he's going to present to give you some of the future plans.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Minor, to President Moore, Board Superintendent Treasurer, Student Rep Holloway. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you briefly about career tech education, one of our most favorite subjects in the world to talk about. Because I'll tell you at the front of the disc, it works. Students go to work, students make great money. Students end up going to college and doing very, very well. The data's on our side and all they're talking about in Washington, D.C. is career tech education. They're talking little about higher education. They're talking little, even less about K through twelve. They're talking more about career tech education. Tonight, we want to talk to you about some exciting news coming to Trotwood Madison High School, to the district. We're projected to open January of 2019 the career tech pathways of business management and culinary arts for grades ten through twelve. Now, when the initial work was done to get it approved through the state, it was gone as far as down, it drops down to seventh grade. Seventh grade is not too early for us to begin thinking about career tech education. So we can get it started this year in high school. We look forward to going forward with some talks to with upper management about what the middle school piece will look like into next year. So when we think about business and administrative services, career pathways, our students will take several classes, which will give them the opportunity to kind of provide them experiences to prepare for an office side. Once they hit some of the certifications, which I'll talk about momentarily, that ups their ability to earn income. And this is right while they're in high school and immediately following high school and through college. If they want to go to a two-year or four-year institution, they will have these skills walking out the door with them and being able to really make a living wage, which is far different from just the average wage or the minimum wage. Some of the pathway classes that would be offered, of course, we offer the core content that you see here beginning in the ninth grade. So ninth and/or tenth graders would start in the program taking management principles the first year in their tenth grade year. In their eleventh grade year, they would take a class in office management. And by their senior year, they have several options. They can do operations management and do a business capstone, which they would get into an internship. And then they transfer and go into the post-secondary, which, you know, one of the oldest colleges in the nation is Sinclair Community College. And that college does an excellent job with students with, have well over two hundred and eighty-three pathways that students can take off and go to with little to no money out of their pockets. When you look at culinary arts, that's the business side. You look at culinary arts, students have the opportunity to earn a couple of credentials. Their ServeSafe credential, Pro Start credential before they leave high school. And once they earn those distinguished credentials, they are eligible to go into any area of food preparation and service and once again, make living wages and will be guaranteed a scholarship. If you're talking about business credentials for our business management, students right before they leave high school could take and pass Microsoft Office Customer Service. They can get these credentials and be a cut above the rest versus somebody who's just walking in off the street and able to take that. But our students would be fully prepared to go forward. In that hospitality, tourism, career pathway known as culinary arts, you can see the dividing line. On the left side, you see food preparation, the start to that hospitality. But once they become ServeSafe certified, which many students can achieve that prior to their senior year, you can see the money that restaurants and that food area would start to pay. A seventeen, eighteen-year-old could start to make about twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is a lot of money for our young people who are just starting out and who've never had experiences outside of home and living away from home. And then for those who are eager to become a chef, once they achieve an associate degree, this is just an average, medium salary that they could start out as. Some of our pathway classes introduces them in the tenth grade with Intro to Hospitality and Tourism, which widens their lens and gives them an opportunity, function under those circumstances of knowing what it is in hospitality that they want to learn. Then they move into their eleventh grade year and, of course, their senior year. There is a capstone there, there is a quality food preparation there, and then they're ready to go on into the world of work or they go into an associate's area or if they want to go to a four-year institution. We understand clearly that in this region, Sinclair Community College is a giant. It's benefits for our students. Our next step, when we take a look at what are our next steps for a business management or culinary arts? We have to educate our students about the pathways, and we have to make sure that they understand what is required of them because some students may see the pathway as being one thing. We really have to do a good job in developing their understanding of what it means. And we develop, it's a simple application for admission into the program. We have to know that you're serious to get in there because there are a lot of dollars and cents put behind a career tech student that the federal government gives to us, as well as our state aid gives to us to make sure that we are preparing them for the path. And after which, we work with Sinclair to select appropriate instructors with industry experience and a minimum of a two-year degree to make sure that they can come in and move this program and move our students from high school and that they are fully prepared upon graduation, that they can take advantage of the investment that we placed in them. Sinclair helps us with preparing the space for the program with needed furniture and resources. And then we work on developing an advisory board, which is usually forty-seven individuals from that particular industry, business and/or culinary. This is required for all paths who receive Perkins funds. And then after students have selected where they want to go, we send them there and we support them throughout the program. So our students are connected at high school. They're also connected at the college level, level. Sinclair, it's called a tech prep, understanding, and agreement, which exposes students to getting on the campus with college credit prep. After we pay a small nominal fee, our students can take as many classes as possible. It doesn't cost us any more every time they take classes. And it does them the world of good, actually, to get on the campus and to go there more often than not to really see how to get their hands and feet into a college setting and prepares them to be competitive and gives them college credit, gives them career credentials, and further scholarship opportunities. So I want to say, I want to stop it at this point because the rest of the thirty-three slides that I have, I do not want to go into. Save everybody in the seat. I'll stop it right there. And President, and to the Board Superintendent Treasurer and Student Rep Holloway for any questions that you might have.
I'm sorry, I, maybe I missed this part, but the tech prep program, what is the cost and how's it funded?
So a tech prep scholarship or program is basically, we pay about three thousand dollars, which is our annual fee that we pay for it. And then it is, after that point, it is forty dollars per student. That's agreed upon by the state of Ohio for every career, for all the ninety-two career tech centers. So you, for instance, if we had a hundred and five students times forty-two, that's like three thousand and something dollars on top of the three thousand dollar fee that we pay as an annual fee. So that's like six thousand and something dollars. And our students can take unlimited college classes up there once we get that agreement in place.
And that's one fee, that's not like a per student fee?
That's forty dollars per head.
Right, and then I mean, the old, when you talk about six thousand total, that's just the one fee, right?
That's correct. That's right. Now, obviously, if there are books associated with the class, things of that nature, then we would pick that up as well.
Do you know how many more federal dollars are attached to CTE students versus?
A typical student?
It depends on the pathway that we're in. So if you're talking about culinary students and if they have factors such as if they have an IEP versus just a regular, it could be anywhere from four and a half, five, six thousand dollars per student that would come in and...
Additional?
Additional.
Additional to the seven and seven...
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Have we done a survey to see that we have the students that would be interested in enrolling in the program? And then the other thing would be the staffing? Because I understand we have a shortage. There's a shortage of teachers, so...
We did, when we applied for the career tech, a couple of years back, we did a survey of the middle school and high school students. So we know some of those students are still with us. And they did select the culinary arts and business as their main interest, as one of the top interest things. And I know that Mary Martin, as well as Mr. Carruthers, are actually working out the staffing. We do have some staff already qualified and certified to do the culinary. So that's covered. And we're working on some, we have applicants for the business right now.
Okay, and I guess my concern would be, before we move too far, and we mentioned that we did a survey a couple of years ago, but I think it would be important that we get our current head count because if we're looking at January for sure, we want to make sure we have the student population there that are interested.
Well, I think the motivation is it does help with their graduation requirements. And several of the counselors that I've spoken to have mentioned that kids have been asking, when is it coming back? When can I take it? But we can do another one.
Another thing, and I've heard to our student representative, is the communication. If we're going to start this in January, are they already aware, and I'm sure maybe they are, that we're going to roll this out?
This is my first time hearing about this. So I'm not sure about the other students, but I would say I think we should do a survey. But if it helps with graduation, I'm pretty sure most students will be willing to do that.
And it will help current students towards graduation for 2019.
I'd like to chime in as well. Turtle New Deer actually has many of the kids, the one program they has, many of those same kids are part of that program that we're talking about right now.
The business part or both?
All of them, trying to get them in different aspects.
Pathways, different pathways for graduation.
For those students. Turtle wanted to be in it, but, you know, again, he's working long hours. He's out right now visiting students as a part of his school program. But he actually has some things down. So one question I'll ask Ray. How much more does a student make having a Safe Service Certificate or a Pro Start Certificate over an additional, over a typical student?
Superintendent, whereas a student who is non-credentialed or certificated in that various pathway would probably make pretty much a minimum wage, that certificate alone will increase their ability to earn four to five dollars higher in some cases, if they would not be starting at the bottom. But that would, that would demand that those employers would take a look at that and pay them for their work.
Mr. Carruthers, to get the ServeSafe or Pro Start certification, do the students have to take an exam? Or is that something that they get from an accumulation of credits and work experience or how's that, how do they get that credential?
That's a good question. So it is, it is an exam that after they have gone through certain classes, the instructor works with them all alone to prepare for it. And once they're, the professor feels, instructor feels that they are prepared for it, they take it, and they can take it more than one or two or three or four times and pass the exam. So it's not, it's not a very difficult, it's only difficult if you're not there to actually get what's being taught. And once they pass it, I mean, the sky becomes the limit because they're now moving forward that pathway.
I had a question as well, Mr. Carruthers. This goes actually to Ms. Minor. Ms. Minor, having a CTE credential, how does that impact us on OD report card? Again, we're a six oh eight, moving toward rate. How does that impact us?
Thank you, that's a great question. There's a section, you know, we have to hit the components on the Ohio Department of Ed report card. And Prepare for Success is one that this will help us get points towards that category of the report card. They literally keep track of how many of our students are offered career tech education opportunities and how many are actually earning those certifications and industry credentials. So this will definitely help us with the Ohio report card. Thank you.
I'm just curious, since our student rep was saying that this is the first time she's ever heard about it, how are we communicating this with parents and really getting the information out?
First of all, that's a great question because all of this just kind of broke, I will tell you, this week. In a week's time. So, yeah, we've been waiting for confirmation from the state. And therefore, once we got the green light that we were all good to go on this and that we're going to start marketing and getting this out to the students and staff. I just broke it this morning to the staff in the staff meeting that we had at seven this morning. So it's just, it's pretty, pretty...
Out of the press.
It is.
I just have one comment. Is this the first time Trotwood's ever done tech prep officially? It is the first time?
From what I know, and Chief Minor can talk through this, what I know is that students go over into Miami Valley Tech, obviously. They leave every day and they come back every day. And they're wonderful students. But to some degree, there's just been, two years ago, the district was approved in 2017. So it started and then stopped. So now it's just restarting it again and bringing it back. So it's been a one-time trial.
Yeah, and I guess it will be important for us to revisit what happened that time. And that's why it is so important that we make sure we survey the students to make sure we have the market for the courses we're about to offer. And...
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a long-term question.
Okay.
Mr. Carruthers, coming off of these programs to our adults at some point in the evenings, unless we get them off the ground and we get them up and going, can we help them to the community?
Superintendent, that's a great question. And the answer is yes. That's the goal of career tech, not only to educate our students in high school, but those who are beyond high school who are still looking to try to find a trade or skill to get into. I had a conversation with the state about that and they prefer that our labs that we're going to have in the future just not sit empty at night. And too many labs sit empty across the state of Ohio when adults in the community could be benefiting from that as well.
My last question in regards to this, do students have to pay for an exam? Do they have to pay for the exam when they take these exams?
The answer to that is no. That's what the Perkins Grant and Fund is there to do and to pick up that cost of expenditure. Students pay for very little in career tech world, period. There is a lot of expense associated with it, but that's why we get Perkins Funds and Grants to help support students who are in the pathways to make sure they have everything and all the resources they need. And business advisors, advisory boards are there as well. That's part of their reason, that they're a part of that because they're making an investment. They want students who are going through career tech for jobs. So it's important for them to put dollars and cents behind these initiatives as well.
How much would that test cost? Yeah, how much would that test cost if we weren't something?
If we think about a Microsoft test, it may be somewhere about forty or fifty dollars per student.
For John Q. Public, how much would it be?
For John Q. Public, it's going to be a lot higher because they're adults and, you know, different kind of umbrella that they would be under.
Hundreds of dollars.
But, yes, hundreds of dollars, hundreds of dollars. But even for our students, even for an adult to go through a culinary program, you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
And it's free?
And it's free for students to go through because of grant support.
So it's free for the students?
Free for the students.
And it'll be a cost for adults?
It would be a cost, not at the same rate that they would if they tried to go to a regular culinary school or business school. But it's at a reduced cost because all the equipment's there and the instructor, there's agreed upon contract to provide those services as well. So it's still a savings for an adult that would go through a school and get it.
At the point of just redundancy and clarity, there were, you know, a handful of students that were concerned about... At the point of just redundancy and clarity, there were, you know, a handful of students that were concerned about maybe not being able to graduate. This answers that concern, correct?
This can't, this can't do a lot of answering for it this year because they wouldn't have enough time in the pathway for the one semester.
And I guess that was my, my other question, it went up from when I answered earlier, about how that helps the students for this year.
For, for, for this year, it's, it's hard because they just wouldn't, I mean, we could give, we, we got bright students. But to give them a, a credential test to say that they could get it in a semester, uh, would not be fair to them because they've got basically a whole year worth of program things that they have to learn in order to get to that testing point. So that we can use that credential and use what's called a web, web exam, that they could go in specific to what they're interested in and try to pass it like that. That would be an unreasonable feat for them.
With State Serve, they get a Safe Serve in a semester?
They could, they, they, they could possibly do that if they worked hard. I mean, it, it, it would be a push, but it's not impossible. I won't say that it's impossible.
And that'll give them the points, a point?
If they got the credential, it, I would just have to verify that because to, to get it in less than a semester.
I mean, the serve save.
The, the, serve save.
Serve save, that's what I'm talking about.
It would give, it, it would give them the credential certification, but it would be hard for them to get the points based on that for graduation.
Hard, not impossible?
Everything's possible. I don't want to say impossible because when we say that, then somebody rises straight up to the top, so.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm just not concerned, but even though it might be difficult, it might be hard, a student will have the opportunity, even if it is hard, to attempt that if they really, really need it.
If they really, really need it.
Okay.
I think what Mrs. Scars was asking though, seeing that we have an extended date, it doesn't end at two thirty. We go to five thirty. The kid is really committed because the kid can now pick up additional time. Would they have time to pick it up? Because what you're adding into another half a year is a, a time after school.
That's true. So they have the opportunity.
Right.
They would, okay.
So that would mean that we would need to start the program when?
January.
Okay, January. Okay, that's what's written in.
Because we're already in the, in the funding cycle and we're already in basically this semester, so it would.
January twenty nineteen.
January would be a good time to start those two programs.
Okay.
I think there'll be a lot more conversations to be had as we all learn more about CTE and, and offering CT onsite versus going to CTC. MBCTC?
Yeah.
Uh, us learning about it in our own community, what does that look like? How does that really provide services and supports? What additional dollars and funding come with that? How might we get a kid through this school year? What would that look like? And then also, you know, really reaching out to our students and getting input for them. Find out what other courses might they want to have for the future, even though they're leaving, it looks like, man, now you want to bring this in, you know? But also thinking about the Career Tech pathways such as music, theater, and drama tech, you know? How might we get those kids involved in this Career Tech world?
Uh-huh, that's good. Well, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Carruthers. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Okay, let's, let's give all our presentations. All right, next up, uh, board item, a board item for A, uh, NSBA National Connection Fees. And as I open the attachment, this is our National School Boards Association Annual Membership. So, is it the same as it was last year?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
We wanted to, to put it on now. We got the invoice and we wanted to just go in and pay it. Normally you, um, we hold it until January, we didn't think we need to hold it, so we got it. It's a good time to just go on.
Okay, so in our next meeting, you want to go ahead and put it out for action?
Yes.
Is that correct? All right.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, the next item, uh, Treasurer's Report.
Yes, I have several things that I want to present to you this, this evening. One is the prior month meeting minutes for September sixth, twenty eighteen, and, um, this is for information only. B is prior month meeting minutes, September twentieth, twenty eighteen, again, information only. And prior month meeting minutes, September twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, and that was a board retreat, and that is for information only. If you clicked on the content, um, you could see that the, the minutes are a lot more robust than they had before. And, um, so, yeah, it would be great if you guys could look at it and make sure that we captured what was said during that meeting. So A, B, and C is for information.
Okay.
Um, well, all of it's for information.
Uh-huh.
D is, is a resolution to approve, um, purchase order certification then and now for Pioneer Turf. And if you open that up. Um, that is for a, um, invoice of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. The work was done before a, uh, purchase order was generated. That was done, um, uh, for field painting. Apparently they, um, painted, um, what is it?
End zones, the end zones?
End zones, um, they painted the end zones. And so we needed to, um, get that approved by the board. I guess we could do that in those two weeks. Anything over three thousand dollars that we get an invoice, three thousand dollars are over for painting before a purchase requisition or a purchase order is generated, we have to bring it to the board for approval.
Okay.
I have a question to ask regarding, Ms. Allen, if the money that comes in from Premier, there's seventy-five thousand a year, that money's set aside where in the future, we won't have to have a then and now where the money's already set aside? And whether they need to just go right to that account and pull the money down because of open P O?
Yeah, this, this had nothing to do with a then and now, um, Mr. Overston. This had to do with timing about doing the work prior to purchase order. But seventy-five thousand dollars is, um, put in general fund and this money or whatever expenses, um, seventy-five thousand dollars is also used for.
But the question I'm asking is this, if you put the seventy-five thousand in a separate account and then draw down from that line item, would it then be a then and now?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm just, absolutely, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter which fund or anything.
With an open, with an open purchase order, would it have been announced yet?
If it's still been announced, if, what, a purchase order has to be generated for a particular, um, vendor.
Before.
Before the work is done, period.
I agree with that.
And so that's by law.
I get that.
And you can, if you can read the then and now certificate, that is just following law.
Well, I get that, but I think the challenge is when the athletic director or others are trying to get money, they're trying to find monies to find, to pull monies from. Would that be an emergency type situation, if there was a money account already established, where they can go in and then have an open purchase order and then pay for it? I would not be sitting with a then and now writing all me.
And, and again, as, as long as you have a, it doesn't matter if it's open or it's an itemized purchase order. It has to be a purchase order prior to any work being done, and that's per law. So it doesn't matter, um, what account it comes from, what, um, money. If, if the purchase order had been out there, we then would have a purchase order before invoice. So we can, we can continue to talk about it, but.
Like I'm saying, that's the point, though. They cannot do a purchase order when there's no money sitting in the account. That's the challenge of then leads to then and now.
There's no money in there.
There's no money in the account.
Well, in the count that they, again, the seventy-five thousand from Premier was set in a separate account. That was for athletic fields, which this is all a part of. Then it can then go in and say, I'm gonna draw down money from that account and have it available to pay. There was no money from the athletic department when they were trying to do this, trying to move money from one account to the next. Was not enough time, but this had to happen. So then I get hit with a then and now, that sits on me as a superintendent, not on the treasurer.
Can, can you give us clarification on that, Ms. Allen?
I'm trying to, to give a clarification.
We'll, we'll talk about that. We'll, we'll follow up on that and how maybe we can reconcile how those funds look, what that looks like, what's necessary, what's needed, so that we don't have a then and now that, which is a hit on the superintendent.
It looks like I, I allow people to spend money without having monies there, yes.
Okay. All right, so what we'll do, we'll, we'll further discuss that.
Okay.
All right, and Ms. Allen, I know you just talked about the amounts and rates of the tax here, so could we not talk about that again?
So I, I wasn't going, I wasn't planning to talk about it.
We just kind of keep it going.
I was planning just to say that there's a resolution to approve.
Yes, we saw that, all right.
So, yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, I really appreciate that. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, all right. Okay. Um, next up, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, and the Superintendent's Items, A, a New York field trip. Uh, we have the resolution authorizing a travel mass in high school choir students to travel to New York City uh, for an arts educational field trip on March twenty eighth through April third, two thousand nineteen. Uh, I know, right, I can share with you, I know there's a lot of money being generated, uh, through the choir, doing fundraising, also working on different events and games and things, trying to raise the money, trying to reduce the cost per student. Uh, so when they go on the trip, the kids won't have to absorb all the costs on their own.
Okay.
About how many students?
Uh, great question. I have Mrs. Bruno right here. Mrs. Bruno?
Um, right now, we have, um, slots for forty-two. That's what we're budgeting for the interest from the kids, the paperwork that we've gotten back from parents, that I've gotten back from parents.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, Superintendent?
Yes, under my, item B, uh, resolution to approve travel mass in high schools' muse, music student activity account. The travel mass in high school as one, singer student activity account, travel mass in high school choir student activity account, travel mass in high school national honor society student account for the school year of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
All right, um, next, item C?
Yes, um, item C is the Five Essentials Contract, the resolution to approve the Five Essentials Contract with the University of Chicago Impact LLC to climate surveys for Title One and our after-school programs.
Yeah, we'll, we'll review that, um, yeah, we'll have time to really review that. Um, item D?
Yeah, this is a, item D is our personnel agenda.
Yes.
And, item A one, recommendation to prove the following certified employees as, to be used as needed basis. These are teachers for the Twenty First Century Program. A two, recommendation for approval of following supplemental contracts for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Again, as you know, we have a resident educator program, mentoring program, so individuals, we have to still bring them to the board. B one, a recommendation for approval of the following classified resignations. B two, recommendation for approval of following classified employment for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. B three, recommendation for the following classified employment to be used on an as-needed basis for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. Again, Twenty First Century tutors, uh, event staff, substitute clerical, and so forth.
Any questions? Next up, discussion items and updates.
Twenty First Century grant, Asha spoke about that.
Yes.
I'm not sure if there's any additional questions. There are.
No, we're, we're good. All right. Um, before and after school programs, we just talked about that, so we covered a lot of this, which is good. Uh, future development, pre-K, adult education plan.
Well, we're looking at their, uh, future development, our pre-K, um, programs, really looking at exploring opportunities for, for more full-time preschool uh, versus half-day. As we all know, the full-time slots are all full. We still have fourteen open slots for the half-day preschool, so we're still investigating that. We're gonna do a survey with parents as well to find out if that is the challenge, half-day versus full-time. And we'll get that survey out here in person by the first part of November because we want feedback. It's because if we're gonna do this, it's gonna take us, it's gonna spend some dollars, we're gonna take some, some space.
Early childhood education waiver, three-year-olds?
This, this is just something that came from how, how the Department of Education, I just wanted to share with the board. They're looking at now, um, three-year-olds being in preschool.
I think I saw that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm sharing.
This would really help Mrs. Scars, all right? Shameless, shame on you. He's ready to vote on it, all right?
Yes, I, I will.
No. All right, then you're out of order, all right? Thank you, so that's information only.
Yes, information only.
Um, staffing?
Staffing, we talked about the, uh, individuals in the Twenty First Century Grant who'll be working that program. We kind of touched on the individuals we're working with, uh, Mr. Gregory, and diverse, diversity, equity, and inclusion area. Um, hiring more mental health services specialists on, uh, provide the needed supports that are needed. And I think he gave some great stats and facts about mental health and, and on, as it is on the rise. Additional supports are needed for these students. And again, I can only thank the board for already approving us to have social workers and mental health specialists in our buildings right now, so thank you.
Well, they're much needed, so.
Yes, yeah.
They're, they're necessary. Uh, policy, policy review and updates?
Uh, policy review and updates, our next meeting, myself, Myra, and Mrs. Scars will be.
And myself.
And Janice will be.
Janice Allen?
The Treasurer's November's.
Sixteenth.
At five thirty. Is that correct? Sixteenth to five thirty. And the, one of the things that may come up though, because we picked a Friday way out, so we're not thinking about football. It may, it may be a conflict.
Okay.
So, just something to keep on our radars as we move to down the road in football season.
Yeah.
A band member says it's a conflict.
It's a conflict, yeah, all right. So you guys will be looking at another day?
We'll figure it out. We can just figure it out.
Yeah, you'll figure it out, okay. Perfect. Anything else under policy review? And, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I know I sent you guys some policies to look at, and what we're doing as a board is, um, we have the state support team report and really and truly monitoring their recommendations. There were a lot of things that they looked at and they looked at challenges for the board. So really and truly, I just want it, uh, it to be on the radar.
Sure.
And I want it to be, you know, we want, we want to be really mindful of how we go about addressing those things. It's just antiquated policies like, uh, professional P D, um, just nineteen seventy-eight, okay? Um, but again, it's just things along those lines.
Um, if I can, uh, suggest, so the ones that you did send, um, twenty-one twenty is one I would actually suggest, um, that we maybe create a retreat around, only because it is, um, uh, because it is directly tied to what the state recommended in terms of figuring out our role as far as personal, personal development. Um, maybe a setting like this might not be the best.
Okay.
Um, so maybe, so that is a, a kind of targeted.
Retreat item?
Conversation. And then A G thirty-two forty-two is actually, uh, an administrative guideline.
Okay.
Responsibility, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't do anything, and that would be a, uh, to the superintendent.
It's interesting how they put that under board. I mean, it's actually. Yeah, it's policy governance, and I don't know if they just want a discussion with the board, um, because, again, what I sent you came directly from the state.
Right, right, right.
All right?
So, and, and when I looked at that, I mean, I mean, we can definitely talk about it, but we wouldn't be the ones.
To make any changes.
To make any changes.
Right, okay.
Um, and then, the other policies were actually included in the review that was done previously.
Okay.
Um, that we just needed a second reading on, and it was, uh, forty-two, uh, forty-one twenty oh nine, uh, where it talks about classified staff and it's just removing that word felony there. Because all felonies don't, okay, we can count. So we, we need to add that to our regular meeting to have that voted on and, and have that removed. Um, and I believe there was one more.
One second. What is it, Ms. Allen?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, uh, forty-one twenty oh nine, or point zero nine.
Forty-one twenty point?
Zero nine. And it's for volunteers, uh, identified as professional staff and classified staff. And, um, there was another one, policy fifty-seven seventy-one, uh, concerning search and seizure of our students.
I don't think we brought this one up.
We did, we did not. This is, um, this is something new. Uh, just, and I sent it to everyone, just kind of taking a look at it and making a determination.
Did you just?
He just, he sent it.
Well, I sent it to you.
Okay.
I just sent it to everybody else. Um, just. Just, what is it that we want to allow in terms of outside entities and their interaction with our kids while they are on school property and in our schools? And just developing a conversation around that particular policy and what that looks like. So, interaction with police or anything else along those lines. So there was some things I kind of highlighted, not necessarily adding verbiage, but just something to look at. And again, some of these policies, we, we do want to send to, the interpretation of verbiage is correct. I just added or highlighted some places I think weren't, you know, a second, a second ago, so.
Mrs. Scares said one policy, we have a year on that last policy that's mentioned about search and seizure.
Uh, two thousand one, October.
Yeah, a lot of these are changes.
Yeah, so we want to look at that. And that is all I had, unless.
Anything else for policy? Okay, um, thank you. D L T, small committee versus group, and I just, I think we just want a little clarification, right, Ms. Peter Freeman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm glad, I'd like to ask, I'll give Mr. Ann Gregory, Ann Gregory, we love to come here, it's an email, and Mr. Gregory to come up and talk about the diversity, equity, and inclusion. Can you just stand right there and just try to talk about the small group that we had versus the big D L T group?
So, so the difference was, what we wanted to do is put together a small group to kind of operationalize our, your strategic vision to make it into SMART goals, and to take those SMART goals and make them the action steps. From the action steps, what strategies are we going to use to address student and, as well as adult performance indicators? So the small group was to kind of make that more manageable, to have those kind of discussions, and then be able to present to the large group afterwards.
So the larger group would include, I don't think we had all of the teachers there.
No, we didn't, well.
I, I mean, in, and, you know, this is a totally new group, so I guess my question would be, our, our larger group D L T would include which group?
So, you're looking at your building administrators, also having them select a leader from their building leadership team. Also, the, our, our admin team here in the building, one or two representatives of whoever's that might be available on the board. And whoever else may actually be deemed necessary in terms of what kind of data we might be looking at. So for instance, if we're looking at discipline data, there may be a dean that we may need, you know, to have access to in order to talk about what's going on in the buildings. So those will be the D L T members. What I'm going to ask, also ask for probably tomorrow, is a list from all of our administrators as to who will be on the D L T so that we can create that kind of listserv to kind of keep everybody in the loop. As well as our S S T representative will also be, Betsy Appolito will also be a part of the D L T as well.
Okay, now, one of the things we got beaten for was not having a community and a parent.
Parents, parents.
So, we need to.
So I actually had that covered as well, what I'm gonna do is also ask the administrators in the building, because they know better, those parents who are actually involved on the P T, P T O, more than likely will probably be a, be a member that would be a part of the D L T.
Okay, so then we'll be, because I should have the dates for the, that came out for our D L T meeting, so you'll send out an updated list of dates to have a bit for the D L T meeting.
Correct, a lot of those D L T days actually are days that we have board meetings on.
Okay.
So, you know, after, those days were already set before I got here, but we're looking at that because those are actual days that the board also meets.
So you're just naming?
Another thing, Mrs. Gregory, is Tasha and Ella also will be a part of the D L T. The reason I ask that, because we think of parent engagement, these individuals are, have their looks and hands into the community already anyway.
Considering they're part of our admin team, so, yeah, B.
Okay, the only other thing I need is, I need a recap for, for my last smaller group, okay? Because we, we kind of dispersed and we didn't have due outs of reporting out from each group that was meeting. So we need to make sure that we're, at least for me, I need to know what was captured from that first meeting.
So I'll give you a quick overview, so the next step was Betsy Appolito, who's the S S T director, and myself and, and Mr. Olberstern were going to get together to kind of over, to kind of review what we came up with in terms of those five or six groups, looking at those five or six goals.
Right.
And unfortunately, I didn't take place today, due to some factors, but we're gonna get together to look at that, and then really also take more than likely what you already created back in April, which was the district improvement plan. So have a frame of reference from starting from somewhere versus starting from scratch. It's kind of look what we already have in place, and again, make those goals and everything measurable so that we can kind of address those issues and those needs that the board saw that we needed to address, as well as, as well as the state.
Yeah, we get it in writing though, because we really are trying to document things that we need for the state. And with that said, not only parents, but community members as part of that team is part of what we were dealing for.
And we're gonna reach out to the city of Troywood as well. Many of the partners that we typically reach out to, we're gonna actually reach out to those individuals and bring them on board to be a part of our D L T.
Okay.
Because what I mean, we, we actually have community parties that we're working with, and if we need to say, here's the dates and bring them on board.
Just bring them in, because when they come back, I'd like to say
They were part of it.
They were part of it.
Correct. And the state, the state will be back here in January, but they're looking to also come back on December seventeenth, when we're looking at trying to really roll out the entire plan to our staff on the seventeenth, talk about the plan, what it is, and where we're going, goals and expectations. So we did talk, we talked, we spoke to the state yesterday.
So what is it that's due, that's that six-month mark in January?
January, yes.
So, what are the deliverables that we owe out to them in January?
What they're looking for is many of the things that are inside from back in April. We'll go, we'll go through this myself and administrative team, we've already kind of talked about this coming, end of the month. We're gonna start finding, picking through everything there, saying what's out there, where we are, and that's the red, yellow, green, and red light.
Yeah, because you had a red, yellow, green, you send so much data, but I know I've seen a red, yellow, green, so.
Yeah, interesting enough, I, you know, we all have this, this is where a lot of the information that I sent out to you guys based on our own professional development, what we need, I know Myra, Ms. Bozeman, I was killing you last night as eleven o'clock, man, what about this policy? And she was like, what? But I'm not making this stuff up, okay, just so that you guys know, I'm not just trying to add extra work on us, but we have to realize that this is October.
Yes.
We're talking December seventeen, coming back, is that correct? And so, and we're talking, we need to have these things done.
Documented, documented, and show the progress.
Absolutely, and that didn't give us a lot of time, so this right here right now is really what we're working on, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Academic pep rallies? Yeah.
So I know we've been having academic pep rallies in different buildings, although the high school had academic pep rally last, like, two weeks ago. The high school principal's not here to speak on it, so you want to speak?
Did you guys have an academic in house?
September twenty-first, it was the Friday before Monday.
Okay.
So what happened, Aaliyah, can I tell you about it?
Um, yeah, it was fun. The band played, the cheerleaders did a cheering, all the floor sports were introduced.
Okay, because I was at that. That was an academic pep rally, because I'm gonna be honest with you, that wasn't, okay, okay, that was a pep rally, okay? Yeah, so the academic ones will look a little bit different.
Yeah, it will look different, one, because I don't want to call them, because it's shortening, I think, because those are the parent engagers. I know we talked, and Lisa knows this as well, we're doing two activities in every building.
Okay.
One's academic and one's social.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not sure where they're in the cycle, but I know they had a meeting the other night with all the P T Os, that was Monday night. So that was more, I think that was more social, but I have to get with the builders and find out when the academic awards are. I see Tracy back in the back, one of our building principals, but she made me have a calendar of dates in front of her. I can get the academic dates for you as the quarter ends in another week.
Okay, thank you.
Those kind of academic awards will have to happen after that.
Wonderful, okay, well, thank you. We're down to the comments, so we're at the end, and we're gonna start, Aaliyah?
Um, I only have one thing to talk about. This past Tuesday, I had the pleasure of attending the O H S A A Student Activity Leadership Event in Columbus, Ohio. Um, we basically listened to five different speakers talk about like their ways to become successful and different leadership skills they possess. And it was a really good seminar to sit in on and take notes from, and it was very eye-opening.
I saw the picture, that was nice, we were proud of you guys. Okay, Mr. Andrews?
Nothing specific, but I would like to say that I'm really kind of excited about some of the things that we're looking at, particularly with the C T E segment, what we're trying to do. And I just, I just think that's gonna be really a very positive thing for not just our school, but for the community.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Scares?
I love my job.
Okay, Ms. Bozeman? I guess I'll echo both of their sentiments, I love my job, and I am very excited about what's gonna be happening. We have a lot of plans coming forth, and I just can't wait to see them all start moving and producing everything we think that they're about to produce.
I accept.
Okay, Ms. Freeman?
We have next Thursday, recognition of our two schools at the Southwest Regional Conference. So I think, how many do we have attending?
Eight people.
Okay, so we'll have our own table.
Oh, at the Southwest, right?
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely, right, we have eight. Okay.
And that's all I have.
That'll be a great event. Ms. Allen?
I did, I, I am sorry that Natasha Togler isn't here, because the information she asked me two weeks ago about the balances for the student activity accounts, I did send, is Mr. Carruthers still? Mr. Carruthers, I sent Ms. Togler and Mr. McCray, who is over the student activity fund. I did send them a financial report for the, for that. Mr. McCray said he would give back with me in terms of what, what activities, or student activities are still active, and what, which ones are old, because I didn't know which ones, and then we'll see whether we can move those funds that have been dormant down into other student activity lines, so.
Yeah, maybe you'll have to check the truth.
So, so I did address her question. Mr. Scares had a question last week of me at the, at the board retreat, and Mr. Scares, you asked me what was a typical fund balance, a recommendation for fund balance? And I actually looked on, online, and it's, it's called G F O A, it's Government Finance Officers Association that we, I belong to, the district belongs to, and the majority of school districts belong to. Their, their recommendation is at a minimum that governments maintain an unrestricted budgetary fund balance in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. And that's what the board did pass, I actually had a copy of the, the cash reserve policy that we passed back in April of like, I think, two thousand, I have to see, I think maybe two thousand fourteen or fifteen. And so I calculated at this point, and that's just from the May forecast, and we'll update that a little more, forty point seven million dollars of expenditure, so the sixty-day reserve would be six point eight million dollars. And so that's what we need to kind of look at if we want to follow the two-month rule, and that's basically what, at a minimum. Now, obviously, we, obviously, we can go by tire again, but at a minimum, it's not two months. And so that's it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Olberstern?
I'll be very brief and quick, want to share with everyone, we wanted to roll out the weekly report cards, everyone, had the bag report on the behavior and some grades, we having some script issues internally, trying to get the script together so it can actually print all that information. Probably in two weeks, we have our group report card, comes out anywhere another week, maybe a week after that, just so it looks normal, not have this come out then also the report card. I want to thank Todd Trotwood and the Lyons I Bank of West Central Ohio, they provided some glasses to one of our student athletes at the high school. So, and Todd's also a graduate of Trotwood, Todd Trotwood, I'll give you some.
Todd Trotwood, you said?
Trotwood.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank those students who went to Ohio, up to Columbus, up to Ohio State for the Ohio High School Athletic Association Student Leadership. And we had our two board refs both win.
Oh, nice.
So they were there representing Trotwood along with the other student athletes from Trotwood. The middle school students this past week went to Underground Railroad, I believe that eighth grade is going Monday, I believe. So they're, they're taking, they're taking advantage of the young lady we met.
That you introduced us to.
Yes, so they took advantage of that already, taking the kids out to give them experiences and seeing some things that connect to what they learned in school. This past.
I'm sorry, when is the next one?
I think it's Monday, I don't have many middle school people here, I think it's Monday, is that right, Lisa?
Yes.
It's Monday. This past Tuesday, myself and Ella, Jordan, Isaac went to the Ives Homestead Historical Society and had a meeting down with them. A great meeting, very informational, learned a lot from there, they learned a lot from us, they said. But one of the things we came away with is a five hundred dollar scholarship that seniors should be applying for. We gotta make sure the seniors know about that scholarship from the Ives Homestead Foundation.
On that point, with Ives, they're the ones that have the pictures, right?
Some of the old.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, I spoke to them about those pictures, some of the pictures the size of this screen here, I mean, they're really big. So I, I kind of spoke to Marlon as well, and I think what we're gonna do, work with them, we're gonna walk the building so they can see that some of these pictures that we want to hang in the building, there's no wall space. So we gotta, we gotta create and find other ways and to be able to put these pictures out, because I think they, they represent a lot of the history and tradition and pride of this community, but again, we don't have the wall space, we gotta figure out another way of getting things displayed.
I made a suggestion last year, maybe two years ago, that let's use technology, the looping, just looping. Because we're not gonna have the space for, we go back to what, nineteen?
Nineteen oh six.
Yeah, so, maybe we should just do looping, you know, some sort of way, I mean, because we have, I mean, it is a rich history. And some sort of way organize it in a way that.
And many of the people in the community have relatives actually own those pictures from that far back. I mean, the pictures are in great, excellent condition.
Just kind of play around with that.
Right.
Chairman President, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if you were done. Is it possible, I made a stark revelation at the football game the other day. Can we please at least entertain the idea about getting a baby changing table in the men's restroom?
You were joking with me.
No.
Oh, you were, okay, okay, because you did mention that to me, okay.
Since we don't have a unit set, which makes sense.
That's all, now, now.
You're done?
That's it, that's it.
Roll one? We have a really good time up here. Good, no, that's a really good idea, that's a really good idea, I wonder how many other people have thought that we needed that and just never came forward, so, thank you.
Well, a couple more things, and I'll be done here, I'll say, also, we had a lot of conversations myself here with some individuals here in the community. Talking about doing a performance, one, it would help identify a lot of, get the kids in K twelve, and then doing a whiz performance here and having that date early part of March, more information will be coming forth to the board. There will, there will be some expenses that go along with putting on production, but again, I think we talked about identifying our students in our community and performing arts, we have to put some money there to identify these students, and I think the money is going to be well-served because not only we have the individuals who are on stage, you're gonna have stage management, kids learn about this, set design, wardrobe makeup, the marketing aspect, as well as performance engineers. So it's gonna be a lot more too than just individual, these kids, I think we talked about seventy-five students being involved in this whole production. So more information will be coming as we get to tighten down the details. My last one, I'd like to thank Paul Latham in the middle school, they started a restorative justice mentoring program. I think it kicked off last Friday, so just want to throw it out there, let people know, there's, there's a lot of things going on, believe me, I have a list of other things to talk about, there's a lot of things going on in our district. We just gotta have a better mechanism of getting all the information out there, and letting them know of all the wonderful things that are going on in our district right now, but again, kudos to those groups I've already said something to, but I'll be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our board, not the board president, to our T M E A president, Mrs. Bruno, and our vice president, Mrs. Love Allen. So thank you too, ladies, for coming out as well, appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you, well, we got a lot going on, I just want to say thank you for all those that are still with us here tonight, we appreciate that. Thank you, well, we got a lot going on, I just want to say thank you for all those that are still with us here tonight, we appreciate that, means a lot. It shows that we have people who are engaged in the business of the district, so thank you so much. Real quick, the presentations that weren't in the, I'm sorry.
I left one group out.
No, no, okay, go right ahead, Mr. Overston.
I'd like to thank the Mamma Mia additions that we had at the high school through Muse Machine as well. So, there's some pictures that will be coming out as well, I will be tweeting them out on Facebook, just follow me and learn how to do all this stuff, if it doesn't work out right.
You know, I tell you, he's got his own show, but that's another thing, okay? That's another conversation, but you guys didn't know that, but... Another thing is, on the presentations that weren't loaded, Ms. Allen and Mr. Overston, can we get those? I mean, there was some really good information, so we'd like to have that. Additionally, I just want to thank everybody who came out from the district for the parade. And the Troutwood Family Reunion Weekend, it was, it was awesome, it was so great, and, you know, we were all out there and got our exercise on, and our band sounded awesome, and our kids, our little ones were adorable, and there was even a float in the parade, from two floats, okay? I just, it brought back memories from...
Heritage days.
Heritage days, yeah, when we were here, a long time ago, okay? And Ms. Bozeman suggested that the board have a float.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, board will have a float next year, alright? Maybe we'll have like a float contest or something, like, do you guys remember Homecoming, all the floats would be out there, and we'd have a contest? What we're trying to do is bring back grand pride, it's not nineteen what?
Nineteen oh six.
Nineteen oh six, but anyway, we're really trying to bring back grand pride, and that's what we used to do, and it was so much fun. And I see all of that happening as we go about changing the culture and climate of the district. So I just want to say thank you, because there were so many people who came out, and I just think that's so good on the weekend to support the district and their kids, so again, thank you. The pep rally was there, it was a good pep rally, I think it was, we haven't had a pep rally in a long time, so it was really good. Mr. Carruthers did a really great job pulling it together, students were excited, there were eight hundred people in that gym, over eight hundred, and it was fabulous. Our students are awesome, our students are awesome, yes, yes, so again, we just got a lot going on, that is all that I have to say. And if there are nothing else to come before the board, oh, getting ready to hit the thing. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved in a, in second, are there any questions? Okay, great, being done, meeting is...